I'm going to start with the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. We're going to have some action and then we're going to recess from it and then start with our normal session that we would. So with that, Jay, roll call for the Seminole City Council.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Larry Church. Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
John Kramer.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
With that, I'm going to roll or go into mayor remarks first. After that, we will take a vote on what I'm going to be talking about, then we'll recess and like I said, then move forward like we normally would. During some checking on some information and with COVID and other things that have happened, we found that our council member Larry Church had not completed the training that's required by state law. There's a requirement that you finish your training as a someone that's serving on a municipality within one year from the time that you were sworn in. So with that, Larry and I talked today, so he gave me his resignation. That's something that we will need to vote on. And I told Larry that once he completed the training, I would be nominating him to fulfill the remaining time of his seat after he completes that. So he was in agreement with that as well. You know, when he completes it, we'll come back to the council and it will be obviously up to a vote for them. So with that, I would need a motion to accept the resignation of Larry Church.
So moved.
Second.
Roll.
We probably don't need to take a vote on it because we don't have an agenda item.
Okay.
We'll just have to take it up at the next meeting.
Okay.
By then, he'll probably have his training done.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. All right, so that helps everyone understand why Larry's not going to be here tonight. With that, then I would entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, are all those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Like signs. All right, with that, we will move on to the regular meeting of the Seminole Airport Authority. Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
John Kramer. Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move it to approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Airport Authority? Okay, with none, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Right, moving on to Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Utilities or Gas Authority?
Yes.
Well, let's see, I may have skipped a page here. There is a ballgame on, you know. Sorry. Seminole Gas Authority.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
John Kramer. Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Gas Authority? With none, I do entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Like signs. All right. Now, we will go into our regular meeting of the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call, please.
John Kramer. Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Jeff Griffin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Utilities Authority? With none and no approvals and acceptances, then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we will reconvene the Seminole City Council. Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree.
Here.
Trace Connor.
Here.
Chris Hansen.
Here.
Eddie Foreman.
Here.
Dana Miller.
Here.
John Kramer. Jeff Griffin.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Corey, would you lead our prayer, please?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for tonight, thank you, Lord, for this meeting. God asks that you would bless everyone that's here, but also ask that you bless our discussions and our decisions in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. That will lead us into our presentations. We have the Roger E. Parks Heart and Stroke Foundation is going to present a donation for two cardiac monitors for use by the city of Seminole ambulance service.
So we need, we need, we need these, this is our LifePad 15, so we can get them in boxes. We need the two more, you know, because we're still pretty busy, so what they can do is they can defibrillate your heart if you're having a heart attack, they can take your regular vital signs, blood pressure, we can see your oxygen levels in them, and we can even monitor your CO levels. But one of the important things they can do is if you're having a heart attack, we can do a 12 week picture of your heart, which is a view of your heart, we can see if you're having acute myocardial infarction. So when we can see that, we can send it to the doctor ER or in, excuse me, any hospital in the city. And when you're having a heart attack, time is very valuable because it's muscle bound, so, so this is a very, probably, I would say probably one of the most important pieces of equipment here is some of the fire room. This is one of the new ones they donated and we just bought and the other one's actually being used right now on the call, so.
Ooh.
It's on a pretty big call right now, so, but we're very, very, very grateful for it and we have a plaque here to present the families.
Great, great.
Yeah.
Please.
Can we try it out, make sure it works before we pay for it? We have some volunteers over here.
Carter has infarctions all the time.
In what?
I personally want to thank, I want to thank the Parks Foundation for their care for our community and our citizens and, you know, it's really appreciated. I hope it's not used very often, but I'm sure it will be. And, you know, there, we don't know how many lives will be saved from that, so thank you very much.
Very much appreciated, thank you.
All right, we will move on to remarks and inquiries of mayor and council members. So with that, I'll go to Ward One, Dana Miller.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And I too want to thank the Parks Family Heart and Stroke Foundation for the donation. I saw on the check, the big check, was it forty-one?
Yes.
Forty-one thousand? So this is my first time working with city budgets and I was taken aback about how, how hard it is to even scrounge around for the, a dollar to find the need, to serve the needs of our people. So when I see that check for forty-one thousand dollars, that's amazing. That's really tough to come by and I just want to thank you for that. That really is going to make a big difference and I just want to thank you. Okay, so my report is, let's see, I'm going to go over events that happened since the last council meeting. On May fifteenth, down, there was a downtown benefit car show. The proceeds from that event went to benefit the downtown committee who is working to upgrade and revitalize and beautify the downtown area. And from what I understand, it was a very successful event. On May twentieth, there was a downtown improvement meeting that Larry and I attended and were able to hear directly from the downtown business district folks about their concerns and needs for the downtown area. I believe Steve was there also and did a great presentation as well. On May twentieth, I attended the grand opening of Elite Cannabis in the downtown area, so I want to thank those business owners for inviting us to, to that opening. On May eighteenth and the twenty-sixth, I attended again those budget meetings and, you know, like I just said, kudos to anyone who has ever served on the city council, to the current city council, especially to Mayor Griffin and to Steve and Jay and everybody who's working behind the scenes to make sure that, one, those numbers add up, because I know that's tough, and then, two, to make those really tough decisions on prioritizing the needs versus the resources, because it's nearly an impossible task. So I just want to recognize everybody for that. Those discussions were interesting and fun and hard and I just appreciate the opportunity, so thank you. Upcoming events on June twelfth, we're having a Chase Park revitalization meeting and we're going to discuss the needed improvements of the park. The public is welcome to attend. And we're, someone has, a business owner has donated food, so hot dogs and chips and cokes, and we're going to have a cookout. And we're all just going to sit around and basically talk about what we want to see as far as Chase Park improvement. If you don't know where Chase Park is, it's the park kind of behind Sonic, in front of, I guess, the old high school, so kind of somewhere in between there. There's, it's going to be, again, it's just, we're going to bring in some folding chairs and just sit down and kind of hash out what we want those improvements to be and talk about fundraising as well. The public is invited. I want to personally invite Mayor Griffin and all of the, my fellow council members to attend as well, come and have a hot dog, sit down with us and, and again, this isn't just for Ward One, this is a city park, so I would like to invite everyone, everyone to attend. On July ninth and tenth, there is, the city arts council is having an art walk and barbecue cookoff, so just wanted to make you aware of that. Now on to the constituent issues and concerns. So one thing I want to do is, and Mayor, I talked to you a little bit about this before, but I want to make sure that we have an update or a follow-up on the cannabis event discussion that we had last council meeting about, kind of, I believe we talked about we were going to establish a work group, so I wanted, I haven't heard anything since our last meeting, so I'm sure there's an update from you about that. And then, so, kind of in relation to that, I did get a, I received a constituent issue and again, I've spoken to the mayor and to the city manager about this. There is an event coming up at the golf, golf course, it's a golf tournament, and it's advertising, and the concern is, from the constituent, that there is a, they've advertised that they're going to be selling alcohol at that event, they're on the golf course. And the feeling is, or at least the optic, is that is a direct contradiction to the decision and concerns about a similar event with cannabis, so alcohol and cannabis. And I believe we had this similar discussion, again, last council meeting. So I'm seeking further clarification, as was asked during the last month's meeting, and specifically the, the process of who is in charge of declining or allowing these type of events, and is it possible to have a council consultation when we kind of deal with these type of decisions that do impact the leader, well, not actually leadership, the servants of the city and how we are able to answer and respond to those constituent issues. My next one is the downtown business cleaning, businesses cleaning. They've been doing a great job, I've just been seeing some posts on Facebook about how they're doing their own, the business owners are going out and cleaning up the flower beds, they're painting parking lines, and they're still seeking volunteers to continue cleanup. So again, I'd like to invite, I've volunteered, I haven't gotten an assignment yet, but I'm waiting for it, but I'd also, again, like to invite my fellow council members to volunteer if that's possible for the downtown cleanup efforts. Another constituent issue that I received was in the downtown district. There, I received an email that strongly, and this is the term they use, was strongly encourages the city to accept the offer from OG&E to install, I guess that's thirty-foot LED lights in downtown, and that would be from the library all the way down to Don Ceres. OG&E will install, has said they will install these in less than forty-five days, and it was noted that this is needed to address the thefts and vandalism in the area. And then finally, on the, the note of lights, and I'm not sure who this goes out to, Steve, I probably should have reached out to you before this, but again, thinking about Chase Park, there's no lights on out there at night, it is completely pitch black when you drive through there, but there's, there's quite a few light poles, and so I'm just wanting to know the status on those lights, are they just not on for what reason? If we could look into that, I'd appreciate it. And that's all I have for my, my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ward Two, Eddie Foreman.
Well, other than my personal thanks to the Parks Family, that's a awful great donation, other than that, I don't have anything there.
Thank you. Ward Three, Tim Poplin.
Pretty much being said, Parks, you know, ever since y'all come to the city, it's been a great asset and thank you, continuing on, and you're just carrying the legacy of the family and the city appreciates it. Thank you guys, and ladies.
Ward Three, Corey Crabtree.
Thank you to the Parks Family as well. Couple other things, lemonade stands for a fat kid, this was a good weekend. I think there was five or six in our particular neighborhood in our ward, so I have to admit that we tried all of them, but they were good. I had my personal favorite, but they were all pretty cool. That was a good idea, so I think that was Bree's idea, but the kids were having a blast. I mean, they, one of the kids in our neighborhood, actually, her mom came to her house and said she made eighty bucks, and I said, on fifty cent lemonade.
Wow.
So if you divide that out, now I don't know what she got in tips, but if you divide that out, I mean, what is that, a hundred and sixty people that came to a lemonade stand, so that's pretty cool. So, but then lastly, I'm not a fisherman, I don't camp very much, I'm fixing to have to start apparently, because I went out to Sportsman's Lake this weekend and I was baffled how many people were camping out there. There was one spot that I, I didn't even realize there were camping spots there, and when I got there, they were so full of campers, I don't know how they would all get out of there. I mean, it was crazy, but it was really cool, and then we stopped and talked to Robbie for a little bit, but he is definitely keeping up with the mowing and the trash and the condition of the lake out there, so if you guys see him, tell him thank you, but it looked great. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ward Four, Chris Hansen.
Well, I would, going, going back to the golf course issue, I remember back when we allowed serving, and I'm pretty sure it was just beer on the golf course, and at that time, there was a separation between beer and alcohol in Oklahoma, and I think since Oklahoma went to six point, those lines have been blurred somewhat. But the other thing that we did when we allowed beer on the golf course, I don't know if it made it into any ordinance or into the contract, but it was designed so that just the golf course was allowed to distribute it, so they could control and kind of monitor whether somebody was taking in too much. Now, what's changed since then, I don't know, people could be abusing the policy, just like they could be smoking on the golf course and they're not supposed to, you know, that, I don't know. I mean, it's one of those deals that, you know, used to say when we were young, you know, you know, it's not illegal if you don't get caught, which is, you know, not true. The second thing is, is I do want to clarify, I was not, two months ago when I was here, I was not attacking medical marijuana, I was attacking the use of marijuana in a way that makes it look recreational. It's not recreational and no, I don't want children thinking it's recreational in Oklahoma because it's not. I don't want adults thinking it's recreational in Oklahoma because it's not, but that's as far as it goes. I was attacking no one for their use of it. I don't have a problem with that. I've seen people suffer, and if that's the only relief they can get, I am perfectly fine with that. But in no way was it meant to attack anyone other than someone who uses it as recreational in Oklahoma when it's not. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ward Four, Trace Connor.
I've been told that today's National Best Friends Day, so if you've got a best friend, do a good day, call them and give them a hug or something like that. I as well went and tried some of the lemonade stands and they were fantastic. We, I did give a few tips. Some were more expensive than others, but they were very well worth it. And I believe the rains maybe come to an end, so maybe we can all start mowing our grass. I know maybe tall weeds and those, but anyway, that's about all I've got.
Okay, thank you. One, I want to address one of the questions you had, Dana, about the cannabis and insurance. One of the things I'm still waiting on is for our insurance company to get back to us and, you know, to determine that. And so until then, you know, it's kind of, I'm not sure which direction to head yet, so as soon as we get that information, we'll be moving forward with it. One of the things I wanted to mention, and it's been in the paper, and I would encourage you to go look for more information, but there is a fire tax vote that will be coming up before too long. I'm not sure if our city manager will be discussing that this month or, or at some other period of time, but with the way it's proposed, the fire department in Seminole will lose roughly eighty-six thousand dollars that they are receiving currently for the year. You know, we've gone through budgets, you know, I mean, that's a hard pill to swallow if, if that goes through. So I would encourage you to call your county commissioners, let them, let them know your feelings, because, you know, if you just look at the numbers, we run more runs than any other ambulance services in the county. But yet, we're going to be getting, receiving the same amount as two other ambulance services in the county. I'm not sure how the numbers are added up, but that doesn't quite seem right. If we're expected to provide the service that we, we all want and desire, even those that are outside of the city limits, you know, we really need that funding. So I would encourage you to make a phone call to your county commissioner, urge your friends to make a phone call to their county commissioner. And that's really all I have, so we will move on with the rest of our business. Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move it to approval.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer. Sorry. Motion passes.
With no items removed from the consent agenda, are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole City Council? If so, I would like to remind you to state your name and your address or business, and please hold your remarks to five minutes or less.
Amy Britt with the Seminole Chamber of Commerce, and my minute, my notes are just on one little post-it, so if I take five minutes.
Talk fast.
I need to be out. Okay, we just have some reminders, and I was going to say one of them during the Airport Authority, there, okay, we're doing a bunch of things. So tomorrow, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, there's a meet and greet. Safran has a new general manager, and so we'd like for everybody to come out, you know, throughout that time, eight-thirty to ten-thirty, and introduce yourselves. So anybody from the community would like to come, again, Safran is the old enviro, so we'd love for you to come out to that. Then on Thursday, forum is at noon at the Haney Center, and then a week from Thursday, Air Evac, who is our medical flight people now, they have done their new facility out at the airport, and they are doing their ribbon cutting, and that is at eleven AM on the seventeenth. The most important one to me is Independence Celebration. It will be on Saturday, July the third, from five to ten, we are doing it in the downtown district. Fireworks will still be at the park, they will start at nine forty-five. So between five and nine forty-five, come down, we'll have them with lathes and food and bands and all the fun stuff, and then the rest is out at the park at nine forty-five. So we hope you guys to join us.
Is that on Main Street or where are you coming?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any other?
Sorry, I'm not one of those, you know, I just have, of course, packets, I brought you guys, I just, you guys have a little bit extra just because of some of the stuff that was brought last time. Don't feel like you have to look at it right now, it's literally just a big, big installation. And the rest, there you go.
Thank you.
And I apologize about how I sound, I have severe oral surgery on my nostrils and my mouth, there's some mixed up, that's hard, and then of course. Can you hear if I stand right here?
They can't, they can't hear you. Oh, there's not a mic there?
There's a mic there.
Yeah, Phil, turn that, yes, please.
Because I'm already hardened, hard to hear. Anyhow, my name is Stephanie Davis and I live at four thirty-one North University Street here in Seminole, and I wanted to first start out by saying thank you to code enforcement for posting that abatement at four thirty-three North University. It was posted on five twenty-one and they came, the property owner came to mow it by five twenty-nine, I believe. So I just wanted to, again, encourage you guys, I know budgets are tough, but like code enforcement's a really important job, and from everything that I've gathered from them, they, they get very, very, very little money to work with, and of course, the citizens of Seminole can only do so much as well to help them, but just wanted to give them kudos and let y'all know that them doing their job does work, and they didn't even have to spend the three hundred dollar abatement, they literally just had to post a notice. So you guys have witnessed two years now, most of you were here, the original discussion of this, so please keep that in mind. However, there has been a growing pattern of unresponsiveness by city employees to emails and other requests at city hall, and I'm just wondering if it would be possible for the city council to urge their city employees to respond to the citizens of Seminole. And of course, some of you have some, just very few emails of some of the unresponsive emails that we've sent that we can't get answers to unfortunately, and in fact, one of the things is a, is a PowerPoint that I was really going to talk to you guys about tonight, that I was promised I would get within ten days, which that was four days ago. I did follow up, again, no response from your city employees. So, and, and this was one that was going to talk about how, at the downtown district, Steve presented a PowerPoint about our budget, right, and said, and I'm paraphrasing because I don't have the PowerPoint unfortunately, but our total budget was somewhere in the ballpark of one point five-ish, y'all obviously know better than we do. And then whenever I asked about, is that included sales tax and code money, he said, oh, yeah, 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 totally includes it, and then he went back to show me, and one point two million dollars was missing from this PowerPoint. It was called an oversight, but for me, from my perspective and the optics that it brings as a citizen, for him to forget something that almost doubles our budget is very scary as far as how is our money being managed, how transparent are things at the city hall level, and so I just want you guys to keep that in mind. And if the answer to their unresponsiveness is they're just too busy and they have other citizens, well, just know that they spend a lot of time on Facebook laughing at their coworkers for not getting gift baskets, and I think maybe that time could be spent answering emails. And I think maybe that time could be spent answering emails instead of talking about, you know, trips they're planning on taking. So keep that in mind as well. Also additionally, there have been ongoing personnel issues and failures by our city manager. And yes, I know Oklahoma statute protects that information from being public, but a true and transparent leader wouldn't have to hide behind state statutes when it comes to employing sexual predators, pedophiles, and homophobes in the city of Seminole within the authoritative roles in our city ranks at that. The citizens of our city found out about these items through news sources that sweep throughout Oklahoma and some of the nation instead of hearing about it from our very own city. These kinds of things happen, right? But instead of sweeping them under the rug and, and giving bad optics, why are we not talking about how we can prevent this in the future? And how we can make sure that all of our citizens are protected from pedophiles that work in our street department or sexual predators that work in our police department? Or the severe homophobic rants that we get from an ex-police chief? Like, why did we have to find this out from OKC News? Like, that is very disturbing. And so to ask us to continue to put our faith in that sort of leadership.
Your time's up.
Okay. Is, is hurtful, and I really hate to be the one standing here, but I hope you guys listen to these hard facts tonight. And thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate your remarks earlier.
Thank you. Do we have any, any others for the city council? Okay?
Mayor, can I address? Some of those questions?
Not right now. No, we're moving on with our. Move on to public hearing. A hearing open to the public and conducted by the mayor regarding the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget for the city of Seminole and its associated authorities and funds. With that, even though I'm hosting it, I will turn that over to Steve and Jay.
All right. We're going to start this off by giving Jay the proper accolades for everything that he does with regard to the budget. He is, he's the hero. He's the one that makes sure that all the numbers add up, right? So I just want to thank you. Personal note, thank you, thank you. I'm going to be going off my markup, so Jay, you're going to have to catch me if I, if I mess things up. We will go as deep as you want to go into the budget. Right now, I'm just going to cover the summary, and then if you want to get into anything regarding a specific department, we can do that. And then I'll close by talking about the capital improvements budget, what we call the capital improvements budget. That, that is, in essence, what money is available. I would call it discretionary money that is available to the city council for allocation. And then we'll point out specifically what we, what you all are directing us to allocate those monies to. So I'll turn your attention to the budget summary real quick. And we'll go into general fund, our Fund XI. And you'll note that this year, we've got a total, expected revenue of twelve million four sixty-seven oh ninety-six and total appropriations of twelve million two ninety-one three fourteen. We had, that brings us with an excess of a hundred and seventy-five seven eighty-two, and our beginning fund balance was one million one hundred forty-eight nine ninety-four. So our ending fund balance in the general fund will be one point three billion two hundred, or excuse me, one million three hundred twenty-four seven hundred seventy-six. Let's go on to something, Substance Water and Sewer Fund, number twenty-two. So if you look there, our total revenues are expected to be nine million eight oh six nine eighty-four, and our total appropriations are expected to be nine million seven ninety-eight five fifteen. Our ending fund balance should be four million two hundred forty-seven and twenty dollars. So I guess the overall message, without carrying that much further, is that Seminole is very healthy, okay? We are in really, really good shape, and a lot of that credit goes to you all, both new and old members. And the way that we're approaching improving our community, it's, it's not bad. It is not a bad community. We are in fact, in my opinion, fantastic. So things are moving very well. Our crews, for the most part, have a high morale regardless of the personal attacks that are going on. I think we continue to see them proceed and be positive in trying to impact the lives of our citizens. We, we continue to see good budget numbers. We had, as you can imagine, the craziest year on record with the pandemic. We really did not know what we were facing. You guys recall, a lot of the city council members or all of us were apprehensive. We just, we really did not know, nor did any other community in the United States or the world know what we were about to face. So overall, I am thrilled with the way that we came through this financially. We lost a lot of good people along the way, and our hearts go out to their families. But from a financial standpoint, a budget standpoint, we did very, very well. So you're probably going to ask, you know, what caused that? Nobody knows. It's, it's very, very difficult to track through the Oklahoma Tax Commission. I would tell you, my opinion is that people didn't have a lot of options. They, they were not going to go to Bricktown and spend a weekend. They preferred to stay at home. And that's what happens when you shop locally, is the budgets get better, the money for the parks, the money to do improvements in your community, they get a lot, a lot better, and it makes our community much more happy. So I'd love to go in, I don't want to spend six hours if you guys don't want to, but Jay and I kind of get off on this stuff. So if you want to go into the individual summaries of Water Sewer Fund, the General Fund, et cetera, we welcome, we welcome that. If not, I'm just going to point out some highlights there.
That's fine.
So the, I will point to, on the second page, which is the general fund summary. If you go into Code Enforcement, item fifty-six, you will see, item fifty-six. So we're looking at the estimated 2021 budget of sixty-six thousand one forty-five. You'll notice that that budget has increased significantly to one twenty-five, one sixty-one. And that is specifically when you guys allowed us to add a code enforcement officer to help. And I proudly say, and I think we demonstrated last time with our PowerPoint, that, that that is having a very positive effect on code enforcement. And we're thrilled with the work that's being done over there.
Steve, you said, what number I lost you on the page that I'm on?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six is animal control.
Oh, I'm on my markup, but it's at the park.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did I?
Why is it department fifty-six?
Okay. It's on the second page. You see fifty-six there?
Fifty-six does say animal control, but it is code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement is fifty-six, right? Are you tracking?
I, I just wanted to make sure your title and your number didn't match.
I got you off. So you want me to repeat that?
No, I don't, no.
Okay. That is just the allocation that we've made for the extra code enforcement officer. We do believe that it's having a positive impact, so.
It's still, that number's not showing on this page that you, you said. Tim, do you have your sheet showing? You have your sheet? Oh, you don't have it.
I gave Tim.
Oh.
It's under, okay, general fund, are you on the fund summary prepared?
No, he told us on the second page.
Okay, the fund summary?
Number fifty-six.
Okay. And then?
That's the only paper you gave me.
Oh, this is on the, this is on your budget, the percentage.
Okay, so all he gave us was this, so we can't follow along. I can pull it up, I can pull it up on my phone, but I just want to make sure that if everybody was looking at this sheet, if they had it, they wouldn't be able to follow along. I just want to make sure if everyone has a sheet, they're not going to be able to follow along either.
It's on the budgets, yeah, right, the detail budget.
So. Okay, I'm going to try to stay with what, what you guys can see in hand specifically. I will tell you off, off of this sheet that we do have in there additional monies already allocated and were allocated last concession.
There you go, now we can hear you.
And one for indoor, right? So we do have an extra position for code enforcement, and I think, I think we are having a positive impact. So let me go. You know what, let's talk about the Wellness Center real quick. I just, I think we need to make a note of where we're at. The Wellness Center, of course, in, in the COVID-nineteen situation took a big hit. It looks like we've had a deficiency this year of eighty-one thousand dollars. And the accumulation since they opened is a negative two hundred and seventy thousand now. We often talk about making the allocation out of the, the ending pot of money, what we call the capital improvements money. So in this year's budget going forward, we're making a forty thousand dollar allocation to ensure that in shortfalls they might have or are taking. So, but that ending fund balance of negative two seventy is accumulation since they opened. So where it was in two thousand eight, somewhere in there. So since two thousand eight, thirteen, fourteen years ago, overall, they lost two hundred and seventy. Now, Matt would really be upset with me if I did not point out that last year, they actually made money. So the prospect is there. It's not like it's an every-year thing. Sometimes they did really well, and the rentals are up. If people are using the facility more, if we get more memberships, obviously the revenue gets better. Probably as deep as I can go. So I think perhaps you might want to talk about the Urban Renewal Authority. So one of the things that we're going to talk about in just a minute about the new allocation. The Urban Renewal Authority historically has been the beholder that the city council allocates money to to do structure demolitions. So this year, you guys, if you vote for the budget, will be allocating a hundred thousand dollars to the demolition of the lactate structures. In addition to that, you are sending forty thousand dollars to code enforcement to do all weeds and grass abatement and other things. So now, that's not to say they may not do a garage or something minor demolition out of that forty thousand. The principal goal is to get Seminole sparkling. And this is by far the best allocation that the city council has ever made toward that effort. So a hundred and forty thousand total will be going to clean up the community. One hundred of that will be going to the Urban Renewal Authority. And that's, that's on the second side of the page, which is what you get. Okay, so. I see some new faces, and you guys probably did not know that we had a gas authority or don't really know what that entails. The gas authority is actually, we are a park owner in the facility that sits behind RFS students. We sell gas to RFS, and we keep a portion of the proceeds that come from the sale of that gas, and that's what that balances. The ending fund balance this year is projected to be eighty-six thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand six seventy-six. So I think we're in really good shape there. Okay, so that's about it for what you have in your hand. If you want to drill any deeper on some of the stuff that was emailed to you, the full detailed personnel, things like that, we can talk a little bit more. Otherwise, I'm going to move into CIP allocations.
The one thing I would like to just remind everybody in the audience and on watching on, whatever we're on YouTube or wherever it's being broadcast, Facebook, that all of the council members have gone through this budget before. They're not just seeing it for the first time tonight. So, you know, really what Steve's hitting is kind of the highlights for the public to hear because pretty much everyone up here has already gone through that and had discussions on it. So if it seems like, well, he's not really talking about a lot, and they're not saying much, it's because they've already been through it and have talked about it, yeah. So I, I just want to kind of clarify that, that they're not just here listening and, and.
Could I just say?
You can.
That doesn't happen altogether.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay?
That's correct.
Breakout sessions, they do work sessions.
Yep.
Like every other community that I'm aware of, they have breakout sessions, and we talk a lot more in depth about expenditures. Why is this up, why is this down? And then we finally get it into something that we can package and split something out that we understand.
Right. So maybe I'll ask, I'll ask this question, not necessarily for the council's benefit, but for others. So what's your starting point on how much you can spend going into a budgeting cycle? Is it based on your last year? So kind of share that a little bit, what, how you go into?
So the state law says that you cannot budget to spend more than you earn in revenue the previous year. So we, we do some projections, and that's why in your budget, we kind of go through some of the actual versus anticipated or estimated expenditures. So we, we are limited. So when we look at, look at the last year's ending fund balance versus what we project, and never more than a hundred percent of what we brought in in revenue the year before, then we have a pretty good idea of what we will be able to do. Always in the back of our mind is the auditor who will probably be here in August or September and standing up there and saying, you guys need more reserves than you've had in the past. Now, last year, and maybe the year before, he did not say that. He said, yeah, well, in, in accounting jargon, that means good job, okay? Right?
That's right, yep.
Okay. Somebody back me up. So I think we're in great shape in terms of reserves. If something relatively disastrous happens, I think you guys have got some. If something relatively disastrous happens, I think you guys have got some cushion there to be able to do some things. One thing that is, is coming, I know this is getting a little off topic, but a lot of the relief money that is being allocated at the federal level and they're, uh, they're even telling us before we even have the money, this needs to go out quickly. So, there are no guidelines to how that money is spent, they're telling us verbally that it needs to be water sewer or fiber optics, uh, but we don't have any guidelines. So, we're going to be very, very cautious in a way, not slow, but specific about how we're going to spend the ARPA money, American Relief, and the PAC money. So, um, those are, those are in addition to what monies we're earning through the revenue streams, the customer. So, uh, I'm, I'm really happy with the budget and, and Jay did a fantastic job that really points to our employees in the way that they go about their business and the way that they seek perfection. So, along those lines, we have built into the budget at your direction a five percent increase across the board for, uh, for each department. My understanding of how I'm to dispense that money is that three percent of that raise or the three percent of the, three of the five percent will be going toward a across-the-board cost of revenue raise. Two percent of that will go into a, my department, a merit raise pot. The, the department head and I will evaluate those employees that have done over and above an exceptional jobs, uh, even more so than, than some of the others that, in my opinion, they've all done extremely well. But there are some that we consider key employees that we just, it would really be a hardship upon us if we were to lose them. So, uh, that two percent will be going to the department heads for, for us to look over and see how we're gonna be able to process this. So, uh, we can, if you want me going to the, the capital improvements, we can, and then if you want to back up and get into some specific departments, we're certain. So, uh, overall, uh, we, and part of this, I understand part of this is going to be, um, relief money that, that we've been told that we're getting. We won't actually make any of the expenditures that deal with the relief money until we have money in the bank. I tried to talk Jay into letting me spend it before we get, it gets here, but he's really, really stingy with money and, uh, that's a good thing. All right, so, uh, in the police department, we are going to have, uh, we're going to purchase twenty thousand dollars worth of cameras. We're going to get one new police car or tow, whichever, uh, the chief and I can agree on. And we are also beefing up our, uh, police force. We are adding a detective and a patrol officer. So, I think this really speaks to the council's vision for, uh, we, we're going to get some things straightened out in terms of officers. So, uh, in the fire department, we are going to do eighty-nine thousand dollars for bunker gear. The bunker gear that they have currently is, is expiring and needs to be replaced. We don't want them out there in expired bunker gear running in the fires, it's just not something we're gonna do. Uh, we are going to be, um, doing a E F P M S consultant for the potential of creating a five-twenty-two district. If you're not familiar with the five-twenty-two, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on it, but the five-twenty-two district is a state law that allows ambulance services to be run countywide, okay? Many counties already have this in place, uh, but this is something that the county commissioners have spoken about before. I visited the building, building came back and said, you know what, we kind of need to be ahead of this. And the guru of five-twenty-two districts, we can hire them for consulting. Uh, so that's six thousand dollars, so. So, in community development, uh, we've allocated sixty-six thousand dollars, this number came to us from O G and D. This is, I don't know, about the fifth of the cost that we got for, for downtown lighting fixtures and poles. Uh, this is sixty-six thousand dollars will get us new poles and fixtures and they're gonna be much more decorative than what we have now. Probably not as decorative and as, maybe as downtown Edman or something like that. But these are going to be nice, black, beautiful fixtures and most importantly, they are going to do the, the lines underground. So, we won't have the, the streaming effect going on in our downtown district. We are also carrying forward, but it has to be budgeted in this year, the community development block grant match that we're doing on the east side of town. That, that is one that we had a violation with the Department of Environmental Quality on.
West. West side?
Excuse me, west side, yes, west side, thank you, uh, near the, uh, the cemetery area. And, uh, we got a three-hundred-and-twenty-five, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant and we're matching it with the three-twenty-five, so that comes out about what? So, uh, the council recognizes the enjoyment that the citizens get out of Snowman Wonderland. We, we can tell you from the staff that the lines underneath the ground, even though they were, uh, direct buried cable, those cables are severely corroded. Oftentimes it appears when we dig it up that maybe there have been lightning strikes and things that have assisted in that. Uh, our intention is to, uh, put new line in conduit and, uh, so we've allocated twenty thousand dollars to rewire the walking trap lights and get it ready for the Snowman Wonderland. Let's go to the airport. So, the airport, we've allocated twenty thousand dollars to buy a jet A fuel truck. That is part of the agreement that we entered into with our new fixed base operator at the airport. Uh, we do have aircraft that land there that need jet fuel and they're forced, even if they drop off passengers here, they're forced to go elsewhere to fill up and come back. And it's just a severe inconvenience and this is one to solve. So, the, we also have seventy-five thousand dollars going into the budget for the F A A grant match. And, uh, right now, they have been, they, the federal government have been just really, really good to us in terms of giving us a hundred percent grants and doing new things like taxi waves and tearing down, uh, hangars and building new hangars. This, this is really beginning to look really special for, especially when you consider a town our size. This is going to look extremely good for us. We're buying, moving on to the lake and we're buying a new mower for the lake, I think he's earned it out there, as you mentioned, that place looks excellent and I'm really proud of the work that Rob has done. Uh, code enforcement, uh, I've already mentioned that we're allocating a hundred and forty thousand dollars into that, that's coming out of the discretionary pot. Reynolds Wellness Center, I mentioned that we're putting forty thousand dollars back in case they run over. Uh, we are dipping our toes into cybersecurity, uh, two thousand dollars doesn't go a long way, but, uh, it looks like that's, that's a coming issue or frankly, it's already good. And it's time for us to take more and better attention. I don't know that two thousand's gonna give us where we want to be, but, uh, at least it just won't. So, the strongest point that the council in all the work sessions has, has put in this year will be the streets. Uh, we're going to do a lot of street work, uh, we're gonna start off with Lincoln Street repairs for two-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand. Roosevelt Street is going to get a facelift at a hundred-and-thirteen thousand. McKinley and Lee Street, uh, both approximately sixty thousand. College Street is going to get thirty-seven thousand. So, uh, that is it on my sheet, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that there are some allocate, unallocated funds in the ARPA money. And the council has kind of let open the idea that we may participate depending on how much grant money might be out there for the installation of the fiber optic system. So, uh, we're gonna be holding back about seven-hundred thousand dollars of the ARPA money, uh, to potentially do that if we can find other grant sources to layer on top of it. And I think that's it, I'd be glad to, to talk about any of those specific items or if you want to get into departments, we can go that way.
Look to the council for their choices. You wanna dig deeper or are you good with it? Okay, you guys.
I just want to ask a question about, uh, states allocated forty-two million dollars for increasing broadband in rural. Have you seen any piece of legislation on that?
Y- yes, sir, uh, there are, uh, it's, it's a big effort and I'm talking in terms of federal, state. I mean, it is, they are pushing hard to get everyone wired and, uh, there are many sources out there and that's why I think this is a great investment to get fiber optics to the home. And, uh, we're excited that, that that's an opportunity for us and obviously it could be a, another utility and it's going to be a source of revenue. And we feel strongly based upon the studies that we've gotten that, uh, we're going to be much more competitive than just about anyone. So, uh, I think I've mentioned to you before that the study indicates that if we can get thirty percent of the market, that, uh, that we're gonna be able to cash flow relatively easy at a, at the cost under what others are charging. Uh, so, I, I think, I think it is a good investment. Now, one of the, the threats, of course, I know I'm getting off of what you're asking, but one of the threats, of course, would be the, uh, the Starlink system, the Elon Musk, uh, satellite deal. But, uh, the early reviews that I have read indicate that, yes, it's great for a short time and then it becomes a little cumbersome and, and certainly if you're, if you're going to school or if you're an online student and it happens to cloud up, you're out of luck. And so, I think for this community, we need something much more dependable than that. I hope I answered your question.
I just wondered if you'd seen any part of the legislation about how they're gonna appropriate it.
Uh, well, that, yes, that is part of the ARPA money, the, the one-point-two million is, is projected to come to Seminole.
Okay.
I have a question if I'm allowed to speak.
Please.
Um, I just want to ask you on the, um, the Snowman Wonderland?
Yes, ma'am.
What, what did you say that amount was? Was, where, where, I'm looking under the tabs and I couldn't find it.
Yep, uh, it's under community development.
Community, under the departments? Is that correct?
The, the tab, if you're looking at the?
Uh-huh.
Yes, it's C I P.
Oh, C I P.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, and then under about the third one down is community development?
Okay, okay, I see it.
See it now?
Okay, so line replacement was forty and the maintenance was five.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's two different, okay, that's what I wanted to be clear. And then also want to thank you for adding on College Street, when we first started talking about this, there were no streets in Ward One, so I want to thank you for adding that in there.
Absolutely.
Those were due last year, but we couldn't do them, so it's about time.
The only thing missing is a swimming pool.
I live on Roosevelt.
Yeah, we need a swimming pool, I agree.
All right, sorry, I missed that.
I was being, uh, I said the only, yeah. Uh, I said the only thing missing is a swimming pool. Someday.
Someday.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we will close the public hearing on the, uh, budget. With that, we'll move on to approvals and acceptances, bids, item one. Consideration and possible action to approve the sole bid of one hundred dollars for a surplus parcel of land located at one forty-eight North Main, uh, next to Kevin Hardeman, owner of the Simply Styling Barber Shop, lo- which is located next to the parcel.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where does this stuff get listed, where do these properties get listed if they're for sale?
Yeah, we, we usually declare it surplus and then advertise for it and that, that was done a while back.
Oh, okay, I just don't remember that, I just make sure.
We've never had any takers frankly.
Cause you have to keep it up.
To, exactly, if we find some, uh, private entity that's willing to do it, you better believe it.
Do we have any others that are currently still in surplus that have not been purchased?
Uh, I'm sure I've probably got a couple, some of them are being retained by the Urban Renewal Authority. Specifically, Urban Renewal has, uh, the Old Parks Drug Site and the site next to Anna's. Uh, those are under Urban Renewal control, but as far as the city, uh, no. I, I think Economic Development Council owns a big lot south of the producer, between Aeropump and the producer, but that's all asphalt. So, there's no real maintenance issue on that.
So, I have one more question, what, does he have plans to do something with it? Or is it just, he just wants to buy it maybe for expansion or something, a new building?
No, he, he pl- you probably know more than I do. He, he has spoken to me and he wants to upgrade it significantly, have some tables out there.
Oh, okay.
And be able to, to picnic, et cetera, so.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Corey Crabtree?
Yes.
Trace Connor?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Eddie Foreman?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item one A, consideration and possible action to approve the bid proposal from the First United Bank with participation from the, from Bank First and Security State Bank for a bridge loan for engineering fees for the proposed new wastewater treatment plant. Based on evaluation of loan terms, staff is recommending the First United proposal as being the best, in the best interest of the city.
Okay, oh, sorry.
You don't have discretion on this?
Yeah, so we did receive two bids, uh, Bank of the West, uh, submitted a bid and they were very competitive. Uh, they came in and bid a floating rate at two-point-five above LIBOR, so, uh, you know, I, I think you're probably gonna end up, I don't know what today, Mark helped me, but, uh, I think you're probably looking at maybe two-point-six or two-point-seven, uh, interest rate. And that is for an eighteen-month deal and they wanted it at, at a floating rate, but of significant consequences, they want us to pledge the revenue stream from the sewer and water. Well, it's hard for us to do that because we pledged once already and this becomes kind of a double pledge and it's, it's very difficult for us to, to get credit ratings, especially going into what we're going to need to borrow for a sewer plant, uh, if we've got all of our revenue streams pledged out. So, I was really relieved when we received the, the package from our other banks. They are jointly offering to participate in this and they are offering a fixed rate at three-and-a-half percent. and they are offering a fixed rate at three and a half percent. Three point two five, excuse me, three point two five, which is slightly higher, but it is a fixed rate for twenty-four months and it is a line of credit, as is the other. So, if, if we don't borrow the whole thing, which we don't expect to, uh, it will be a line of credit that we draw against and pay three point two five percent fixed. And, most importantly, they have agreed that they are not going to require any collateral for a one point seven million dollar project. That is community banking, so, uh, from a staff's perspective, that was a big deal and that's why we're recommending that we go with the joint bank program.
You know what default is, don't you? Manager's head.
I don't know if we want to go there.
That was the best deal.
Yeah, so, just, just for the edification of everyone. This, this loan that we're entering into is a loan to be able to pay our engineering firm up to one point seven million dollars to engineer a new sewer plant. Our new sewer plant is, or, excuse me, our old sewer plant is really showing signs of, uh, not doing well, to put it mildly. So, we are going to have to go, and in essence, Department of Environmental Quality has, has told us we're either going to have to do a significant rebuild or we're going to need to build a new sewer plant. So, uh, this engineering fee and, and the contract we'll enter into is about one point seven million dollars, but we only expect to have to draw about eight hundred thousand dollars before we get a loan grant from the USDA. And so, the USDA, we've already got our consultant on board and Sharon and I have been working with them. And, uh, everything looks great. We've got, everything is, uh, is up to snuff. And we would expect sometime, uh, maybe as early as December, January, that, that we would get a soft commitment from them, at which time they will take out the loan that we have with our community banks. And so, that's the plan on repayment, is that USDA will pay back, uh, the engineering fees through that grant, that loan grant.
Okay.
I have a question.
Please.
So, you'll have to explain this to me, I'm not in finance. So, when it says, um, bid proposal with participation, but then at the, it does, it looks like we're singling out one, so can you explain that to me?
Yeah, the, I, I think you're saying that, uh, First United made a note at the end of it. They're the ones that submitted the passage on behalf of all three banks. But they made a note at the end that should any of the other two banks not choose to participate in the loan, that they would take on whatever is left.
Okay.
So, at the end, First United could end up with a hundred percent, but I think verbally, there's already been agreement from Bank First and Security State that they want to take a third of whatever is left, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Resolutions. Consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-One dash oh seven, a resolution adopting the fiscal year, FY Twenty Twenty-One dash Twenty Twenty-Two Consolidated Budget for the City of Seminole and its associated authorities and funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Ordinance, item three. Consideration and possible action to approve Ordinance Number One Two Five Six and Ordinance Amending Fees for Grave Sites, Grave Openings, and Associated Fees at Maple Grove Cemetery.
Mayor, could I defer to Bryant while I get it?
Of course. You need this microphone if you'd like.
As you guys can see in the packet, the last time that we have done any changes to our fees was approximately two thousand and four. Uh, this was brought up by our Parks Board, which cemetery is part of that. This is something that they have been working on for approximately the last three or four months. We went out and we looked at different rates, Rest Haven, other cemeteries around us. We felt like we needed to raise our rates. Our rates are either equal to or just a hair underneath what other, uh, cemeteries around us are charging. So, we are not out of the ballpark. We are actually probably just a little bit low or a little bit below them. We did not want to deter our citizens from, uh, Maple Grove Cemetery. So, that's the reason why we kind of stayed. Some of the, some of the fees you'll see in there, we may be twenty-five or fifty dollars lower than others, but, uh, this was agreed on unanimously by the Parks Board, so we wanted to bring it to you guys, see if, uh, we can get this passed on.
I know you haven't been over that group for, uh, too long, but do you know how long it has been since we had modified our rates?
Two thousand and four.
Thanks.
So, it's been a while. Any other questions?
Thank you.
By the way, thanks for putting the sign up, whoever did that. Now people know where to go to get in.
So, we have a little approval.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under Current Business. Consideration and possible action to approve closing Second Street from Broadway to Osage on June eighteenth, twenty twenty-one for a library fundraising event approved at a special permit board meeting held on June first.
Move to approve.
Second. Roll call please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item five. Consideration and possible action to approve closing Second Street from Broadway to Osage on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one for a food truck event approved at a special permit board meeting held on June first. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item six. Consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to send a letter terminating the city's agreement with the Seminole Housing Authority related to the facility and operation of the senior center located at three twenty-two North Fourth Street.
Mayor, can we, can I ask one question? I'm sorry, it relates to the last thing Trace pointed out. Was that food truck thing supposed to go along with the library?
No.
Okay. Okay.
She's doing it, she's doing a separate one, right?
Oh, it's, it's okay, I just.
He's, he's good. He just asked that question.
It's okay, it was just they were different days and we wanted to make sure it wasn't supposed to be the same day.
It's the day after. I think we're going to leave the barricades up.
I think there is a food truck at the library one, too.
There is.
Okay.
So, that may be your confusion.
We're doing it, you're doing your food truck deal, but you're closing the street the day after the library, right?
We're not closing the streets. Um, I've gotten permission from the permanent board to use, uh, but some of the major blocks and openings, Kevin's gave me permission. Um, I still have a copy of permission, so I'm going to let it be supplied, so it should be okay. Um, but we play the, all the artwork is going to be inside businesses. Um, the barbecue is going to be private, just little places that park in the parking spots. There should be no reason to close the streets. That's, that's exotic meds. Yeah, that's, I have nothing to do with that.
So, they're different events.
Okay. Two different.
Okay, we're good. Sorry. Okay, back to item six. Do I need to read it again?
You're good. I just want some clarification.
Okay, please.
Can we, can we ask what, to kind of expand on this a little bit?
Yep, Sharon Emmett's going to join us. Sharon?
Sharon, now it's your turn.
She's, she just, she just said exotic meds. That seems, uh, exotic. Tell us about exotic meds. I know I was at the permit board, but I don't remember.
I thought we were talking about. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. That's not what we're on. We're on item six. Consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to send a letter terminating the city's agreement.
No, we thought there was a typo, but we're good, we're good. We figured it out, so, that's okay.
All right, so now we're on to the housing authority?
Yes, yes.
Got it. They wanted in-depth intel on that exotic meds and I have it. All right. So, uh, let's talk about the housing authority. Randy Thomason came and visited with me, uh, at least twice now and, to be honest, I'm not real clear exactly why he's wanting what he's wanting, except that you, you'll recall that Kay McGruder has passed and she was our director, uh, down at the senior center for a long, long time. And frankly, we can't find anybody that can do anything close to what she can do on a part-time basis like she did. Randy has suggested that we just turn the building back to them. They built it, it was their money, and that we should turn the building back to them and then they would begin to pay pilot. Pilot stands for taxes in lieu of something.
Ad valorem, he said.
Yeah, ad valorem taxes and then they would begin to pay us ad valorem, or taxes in lieu of ad valorem. Apparently, they've got extra money to be able to do some of the upkeep and, uh, the renovation of the building, so I said, you bet. What do you need from us? And he said, well, I need a letter saying that you guys are terminating the agreement. Okay, so I drafted it. That's what's in your packet.
Okay. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
I just didn't know what it meant. That's just a clarification.
So, the senior center is, there, this is what they want, correct?
Yes, my understanding is there's no activity in there now.
Okay.
Now, we're not talking about the Heritage House. We, we actually had two. For, as long as I've been here, we've had the Heritage House that does most of the bills and operations. Uh, and then we had another one around the housing authority that centered, uh, tried to serve a lot of the housing authority members. And my understanding, unless Jay knows different, I, I don't think there's much of any activity in the building now. I think at best, we're using it for a voting site.
You just write back here, behind us.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now elections and appointments, and I have no names on my sheet. And I, so that probably means no one else does either, so I have it on my phone, so.
That's fair enough.
Is it this it? All right, so, consideration and possible action to approve the attached list, which you don't have, of mayoral board appointments. It is in your, was in your packet when it was originally sent.
It was in your email, yeah.
It's in the email.
So, if you're on it. Yeah.
You were supposed to memorize these as well.
Well, I failed that. So, Seminole Urban Renewal Authority, so I will give the names and we'll have to vote on each name. Seminole Urban Renewal Authority, Gilbert Reese. He replaces Michelle Sneed, who resigned, and his term will expire July twenty twenty-two. Claudia Willis, I'll, I'll, I'll give all the names. Claudia Willis, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, and Rick Geist, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. So, Gilbert Reese. Motion to approve.
Second.
And we need individual roll calls? Okay, roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Claudia Willis.
Motion approved.
Second. Roll call please.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Rick Geist. His. How about if you just go ahead and take roll after they say it? That way we'll save some breath.
Good to that. You ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Board of Adjustments. Gary Adams, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, and Michelle Downey, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. They both are currently serving on the Board of Adjustments. Gary Adams?
Move approval.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Michelle Downey. Motion to approve.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Planning Commission. David Wilson, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Jenny Morgan, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. David Wilson.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Jenny Morgan. Motion to approve.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Lake Development Board, uh, Commission. Stephanie Lambert, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, and Neil Craig, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Stephanie Lambert.
Move to approve.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Neil Craig. Motion to approve.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Park Board. Donna Quanalti, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, and Matt Gates, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. They are both currently serving as members. Donna Quanalti.
Move to approve.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Matt Gates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.[1662.32]
Airport Advisory Committee, Mike Hackney, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. Mike is currently serving. And then Tim Campbell, term twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four. He would replace Zach Taylor, who is currently on the management team of Taylor Aviation for our FBO at the airport. So, Tim Campbell would be replacing him. Tim Campbell has a flight service out at the airport. So, he has activity there, and, uh, so he has an interest. Alright, Mike Hackney.
Move approved.
Second.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Tim Campbell.
Motion approved.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Corey Crabtree.
Yes.
Trace Connor.
Yes.
Chris Hansen.
Yes.
Eddie Foreman.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
Okay, that's it on the list. I think that's the most I've ever had, seems like.
Well, and I'd just like to add on all these people that, you know, they do a lot of work for us. And the things that they do appear on our consent agenda, and it saves a lot of time. And I just want to thank them. These are all, you know, volunteer positions similar to what we do. But they, they make our job a lot easier up here.
Alright. We have reports. City Manager.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not going to spend a tremendous amount of time on the fire tax since the mayor kind of brushed over to me. But, uh, it's a big deal. When we lose eighty-six thousand dollars that, per year, that used to buy ambulances, it's a big deal. It's a problem. And I, I probably need to note that we don't just cover the city of Seminole. We cover from Wolf Hill and Bow Legs to New Lima to, uh, most of Strathairn, all the way past Sportsman Lake to the county line, part of Maude. It's just, we run so many miles and so many runs on, on county roads. And, and what I'm talking about is the difference between, correct me, Fielding, but you're talking about thirty-two runs, thirty-two hundred runs per year versus four hundred and fourteen for Conewa. It's to the point where Conewa has to contract out of Ada for ambulance service. They often, is that an exaggeration? Sometimes.
Three times.
Yeah, okay. So, three times this week, we have had to cover Conewa because Ada doesn't have the staff to come to Conewa. And yet, they, the county commissioners have taken it upon themselves to send a proposal to the voters that would cut Seminole eighty-six thousand dollars per year. So, over a five-year period, roughly three ambulances will not be purchased. And I just, there's no way to justify it. It's, I just can't see how we're going to add those numbers up and still be able to do what we need to do for our community, plus all those others that we look out for. And I'm including WeWoca in that. There are numerous times where we loaned WeWoca one of our standby ambulances to be able to run their system. But on top of that, we, Seminole, are the only service that transports from our hospital to Oklahoma City. If you need to go to Oklahoma Heart, or Baptist, or any of them, Mercy, you're riding in a simula, in a Seminole ambulance. And to say, "Well, you know what, that, eh, you guys can afford it." No, that's not, not the way that you do business. You know, it was thrown out at a commissioners meeting that, that, hey, Conewa's already got a twenty, twenty-dollar tax, or twenty-dollar fee on their water bill, and, and they're paying too much already. Well, I'm sorry. I mean, that's, that's, I, I wish it, I wish better for them. I, I like the people of Conewa. But our job is to take care of the people of Seminole and of the fire district that we take care of. And, uh, this is going to take a big chunk, a big chunk, that we're not going to be able to provide the level of service, especially in the outer areas that we were able to do before. Just wanted to point that out. Uh, I just want to, I think everybody probably has questions about why is Main Street closed? Uh, we had a, a pretty big problem with our drainage system underneath Main. Baker and his crew have done a, a really good job of, of identifying after chasing about four different problems to ground. But, uh, we expect within the next, uh, probably next seven to ten days, we'll have that all repaired. And at least, uh, we'll be driving over it. It may take us a little while to get it compacted, but we'll be ready to go on that. Congratulations to, uh, the whole team that brought the new softball, or the softball tournament back to Seminole. If you drove by the, uh, complex this weekend, you saw about thirty-two different teams. Uh, I saw tags from everywhere, uh, out of state. It was amazing. So, good, good tourism dollars. Great job. I'm going to let Brad talk a little bit about the cannabis and studying that we've done. I do want to mention that Roger Parks was a friend of mine. He, uh, he was a kind-hearted and, and gentle soul. And it's just, it's gratifying to me to see his, that kind of legacy continue. And, and what a great cause he's supporting there. And I appreciate the boys in Pan for everything they've done there. Uh, Squeeze the Day, wow. I did not expect that kind of participation or, or the level of excitement that that generated. Bree did a great job of promoting it and getting people involved, and, uh, it was a lot of fun for everyone. Great, great work. The Epic Group, uh, the former Enviro, now Safron Group, uh, put on a fantastic car show. I went out there expecting a car show. It was more than a car show. If you missed it, make sure you catch it next year. I've heard rumors that they're going to, to go right into planning the next one. So, it's going to be a lot of fun. Few aircraft were there, a bouncy house for, for me. It was great. So, I, I probably need to mention that we have been notified by Center Point Gas that they want to extend the franchise. And, and the way we do that in Seminole, anytime a franchise agreement like this is, is asked for, we have to send it to the voters. So, probably next month, you will see it come to the city council. And, uh, you guys will need to put it on a ballot of some sort. And we'll have to go vote for Center Point to extend the franchise agreement. And I'll be glad to answer any questions off, offline if you have questions about that. Downtown, man, they're full of energy. Everybody downtown is, is juiced, and we're doing everything as a city staff to support that. We, we love seeing clean streets and sidewalks and flowers and flower beds. We're, we're pumped as well. So, we follow their energy, and we're going to do everything we can to, to help that go. That's all I have.
Ask a question. Steve, is the fire tax not just a vote on a reallocation, but also an extension of an existing tax? So, if it doesn't pass, they'll have to come back?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's an extension of a sales tax that's in place. And it's broken into three parts this time. There'll be one for nine-one-one. One section will be, a part of the quarter cent goes to nine-one-one. A part of the quarter cent goes to rural fire departments. And that was part of our cut, went to rural fire departments. And then, then the three ambulance systems is another one. So, the, the history on this, do you mind if I expand a little bit?
No.
Okay. So, the history on this is then two thousand and five, we had the great wildfire of all wildfires, you may remember. And, uh, it ate, I can't remember, helped me a hundred and seventeen homes or something to that effect. And, uh, uh, just a, a whole lot of acres. And it was pretty evident that all the borrowed equipment that we had all received from the Department of Defense through the years was not adequate. So, the state stepped in. They gave the, each rural fire department an extra fourteen thousand dollars or so. And that's been increased through the years. And then, they came to us and said, "Hey, we don't want to be put in that position again. Would you guys be willing to do a five-year tax and give us an extra twelve or thirteen thousand each?" So, Sisacworth, Strathairn, Cromwell, others that needed a little help, they said, "We're going to do a five-year deal." So, we did. And we agreed, and we, we helped pass it. Seminole specifically helped pass it. So, when it came back to us, that, yeah, so, one of the fire chiefs is driving an Escalade, and one of the departments bought recliners and a big screen TV with that money. We were not happy. And then, they went back and said, "Okay, okay. If you're upset," talking to Seminole, "if you're upset, we'll, we'll put an oversight board if you'll pass it for five more years." And this time, we won't have any of that. We'll actually put it into the things that, that need to happen to fight fires. Okay, but, but not just for rural fire. We're going to do something for police departments and, and ambulances. And that's when it began to split into different departments. At that point, uh, right after that, so they came back for a third renewal. And the third renewal, they had significant deficiencies in funding for nine-one-one. And the reason is because nine-one-one depends upon the landlines being taxed. So, if you have a landline, you pay fifty cents a month, something like that, some, some fee. But they, everybody quit using landlines, started using cellphones, and they're not, the FCC will not allow us to put on a fee to support nine-one-one onto cellphones. So, there was a deficiency. And we said, "Alright, in this third go, we want to make sure that nine-one-one is taken care of. But at the same time, we want ambulances, and we will give a little bit more to the rural fire departments." In the fourth go, this one, they came back and said, "Yeah, we'll pass it without you. We're going to give the fire, the rural fire a bunch more money. We're going to cut Seminole, and we're going to give a lot of money to Conewa and WeWoca." Wow, okay. That's where we're at. Did that answer your question?
You bet.
Brad Carter.
So, I probably should have spoken up when Dan asked about the medical marijuana issue. We haven't asked him to take one, take one each of these in passing, and that's one off top. So, uh, since the last council meeting, uh, we were obviously directed to, to look into, uh, concerns that we had on, you had on the, uh, medical marijuana, how we're going to deal with it. Let me say that, um, Chris is exactly right in he, what he decided. Uh, several years ago, the council, uh, we moved it to three-point-two, low-point beer. Basically, there was a, a provision of drinking in public that was consistent with most towns and cities in the state. What the council did is we basically wanted each event coordinator or organization to come to the council and ask for permission, make sure the council authorized it, the necessary, uh, things were in place to, you know, to obviously protect the public, make sure that minors didn't have access to alcohol and all that. Amy, she stepped out of the, of the chamber, that's why she comes here every year, and asks to, you know, to, for the permission from the council to serve or make alcohol allowed at certain events. She'll always tell you, "We're going to do it here. We're going to do it this way. Uh, we're going to have a roped-off area. We're going to have a security guard," whatever it may be. So, the council, that all stems from the council's action from that particular time. At the same time, and Brad.
Could you, could you mind moving the mic for people can't hear that are watching?
So, at the same time, um, the golf course issue came up, and what are we going to do about the golf course? And the council decided, you know, what we'll do is, you know, we lease that golf course. We privatize that golf course. They're responsible for enforcing the rules at the golf course. And the council recognized at the time, as I recall, somebody, will probably have to correct me if I'm misstating anything, but the council decided, "Hey, now, well, that's just what golfers do. You know, they drink beer." So, we will allow that. There'll, there'll be no alcohol on any public property in Seminole. With the exception of the golf course. You manage it, golf, uh, people. You're the ones that are responsible. You're the ones that are liable. You're the ones carrying the insurance on it. You're going to identify the city if there's an issue, and that's what we did, as I recall. Now, that was either by ordinance or resolution, and that may have been fifteen years ago. And I'm still looking for that. So, I'll find it and I'll circulate it when we get, get a hold of it.
Can I add one more thing to that?
Yes.
We also did that because they do lease the golf course, and it was another way for them to make money to help them fund themselves. And I don't know if anybody recalls, but part of the group that manages it now taking over, our golf course had gotten in pretty sad shape, and we were risking losing greens, and which even, and I can't remember what they said back then, but it was going to be rather significant if we had to replace those greens. Turns out, we didn't have to do that. This, these people came in and took over and have done a great job. And we've really tried to help them because we don't want to take responsibility of that golf course back ourselves because, you know, it's one of those deals where a private entity is doing much better managing it than, than we ever could.
That's right. Yeah, Steve, I think he stepped out, but Steve, uh, I think, uh, told us back then, just to replace a green was thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, or fifty thousand, something just, just a crazy amount of money. So, we cannot afford it. No way we could do it. And literally, we had, I think that hole number three, about getting off on a tangent, that thing was bad, ate up with, uh.
Horrible one time.
It was horrible. So, anyway, you're exactly right. And to answer to that inquiry from, from last month, that's kind of where all that came from. And we'll put our hands on that. It's just going back and looking for those, the resolutions that were passed at that time. So, fast forward to, to recently, where, uh, in the, in the recent history, now we have, we all have three-point-two beer now. We, we're, we're six-point or whatever, regular point, whatever we call it. So, it's now managed by the ABLE Commission. So, the ABLE Commission, uh, is, is who you deal with. You just get a permit here, uh, and, and you go down the road. They're the ones that actually regulate, uh, the alcohol in, in that beer now. So, really, this issue is the, since last month, I mean, I really, I mean, I think maybe Sharon mentioned it a while back when we had our six-point, when the six-point beer came on board, we revamped our ordinance. We had to retract a bunch of it. But at the same time, we probably are going to have to do some modifications to make sure that we catch up with some of the things that, where that affects it the rest of our code. And this is just one of those things that came up. So, we probably need to look at, uh, that particular issue and how we, how you want to deal with it. What I've handed you since, uh, I think everybody's got a copy. The day before our last meeting in May, the governor signed a bill that actually amended the, uh, the statute, the medical marijuana statute, and clarified a lot of language. It was presented by the Oklahoma Municipal League. It was in coordination with, uh, a lot of the proponents of seven-eighty-eight, I understand. But one of the things that it did, it protected the rights of the licensee, uh, to make sure that, you know, you couldn't discriminate against those people that have that particular medical marijuana card, use it for, for the purposes that they do. And it outlines some rights. At the same time, if you'll look at that first document you gave out, you'll look, there's a, I kind of marked it there. There's just one paragraph that I wanted to, uh, point out to you that was a kind of a key takeaway. That basically clarified the language that it's not just for, uh, uh, smokable marijuana. It was for e-cigarettes and, and vaping as well. They wanted to make sure, apparently, from, from what I was told, they wanted to make sure the legislature needed to make sure that that language was clarified because it was causing some confusion in other communities across the state. So, that's just really the key takeaway for, that I've provided you there. That does not, believe it or not, that becomes effective November the first. So, it's not effective right now. So, I just want to make that clear. I talked to the Assistant General Counsel for the Oklahoma Municipal League. He's the, he's the expert, uh, on, on everything that's going on. They monitor all the ordinances, uh, across the state. They're working with communities on how to deal with a lot of the issues. Most of this stuff is new, as we know, and it is controversial, very. In fact, I included a, an article, uh, from the Muskogee Phoenix there, just a, just a one, just a one-page deal. It, it was very controversial there. Um, but I put that there because they did provide a mechanism where this could be, uh, utilized. We talked about Muskogee, and you want me to look at their ordinance. You have in cop, a copy in front of you, the Broken Arrow, and the Plow, and the, uh, Muskogee ordinances. The one thing that's consistent, uh, in all of these ordinances, in just about every one of them, uh, that I've been able to run across, the, the noxious odors. There's always a provision about noxious odors, and that seems to be the one thing that, that every community, uh, puts in there, uh, basically from a public standpoint. And provides mechanisms relief to other citizens that are offended or aggrieved by that. So, that's one of the things that, that you might, uh, we're going to have to take into consideration. So that's one of the things that, that you might, uh, we're gonna have to take into consideration. I think we may even have that in our proposed, um, uh, I think we have, we got that in there, have, see, I think we do. But almost every one of them had, even Muskogee's. The one thing that Muskogee did, there was a, a, it was, it was, it was a back and forth. There were some pros, there were some, you know, some opposition. And one of the issues that came up that seems to be consistent with some of the other communities is that, what do we do? Do we, do we designate certain areas for medical marijuana users to use? And that seems to be something that is, is happening. Muskogee, the city council, said, okay, we're gonna do it. We're not having it in, inside buildings, they said. We're gonna do it on several outdoor venues. They will allow that for special events. However, they have designated their parks board to come up with rules on how it is to be used and administer or, or that particular ordinance, how it's gonna be enforced, and some guidelines. And that's how they're doing it, from what I understand. So, uh, I wanted the council to know that, you know, we've staffed this, we staffed it multiple times. Most of this that's coming in, we're still trying to get our arms around it. You know, and we're not gonna have a perfect product, I know, but we're moving in the right direction. And I think that when we identify the issues that we need to really kind of grasp and come up with a, with a plan, that's gonna be something that would be productive, you know, we could, we can sit down and come up with something for your consideration, whatever that may be, whether you decide to do it or not. But, uh, it's gonna take some more time and we'll, we'll get, uh, you know, with the law changing, November first. You know, we, we know that, that marijuana is now, that was one of the things that was clarified, is that the pub, the tobacco, the public, uh, smoking in public includes marijuana as well as tobacco. So that, that is, you know, a, a part of it. That was one thing that they wanted to, to make sure that, you know, was, um, you know, clarified. So, basically in a nutshell, uh, we've got it. Mr. Mayor, I will be, uh, I'll work with Steve. I've got some more material that they owe us, they owe me. I'll get it in, uh, brief you and, you know, the department heads, however you wanna do it. And then you can decide how, how you want to proceed.
I have a question. Is the golf course still considered a public space?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
As for the alcohol, that's for them to sell it, correct?
I don't think they, they don't sell it.
They don't sell it?
You can bring your own and keep it on your cart. You can't share it, you can't do anything.
Gotcha.
And that was the, oh, I'm talking out of turn. Uh, Mayor Mavs, I know that was the problem and it was because, um, the one cannabis event they had out there, and, and I'm going by people that were out there, they said that they were handing out some edibles. They had a bong out there and was sharing it with people, had it in a golf cart. They wasn't asking for, you have a medical card? Okay, here. They were just kinda handing them out and that's what they were afraid of. It wasn't the fact that it was cannabis or whatever, it was the fact that there was nobody really there policing it. And I know if I had a pocket full of hydrocodone, I couldn't go around and hand it to everybody. Uh, it's a prescription for you and it's not shareable. And I think that was the main concern with what happened this last year. And I think it's a fact that, that it was just kinda came upon them and there was no guidelines or anything. And I think that's kinda the why it ended up the way it did this year. But it was, it was nothing negative towards medical marijuana. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Interesting, I hadn't heard that before.
Mayor, I have a question about that, yeah. So I might, I wanna clarify, so when you say, um, they were afraid, who's, who's they?
Huh?
Who's they?
Managers of the golf course.
The managers of the golf course. So they're the ones who decided to say no to the, this year's cannabis event.
They run the, they run the golf course.
So it was no city employees, it was no city elected officials who said no to it. It was the golf course who said no.
Yeah, and, and they looked at the insurance. Uh, they, they couldn't find anybody really to underwrite it, from what I understand. And that was just a conversation that I had with the people that were renting it. And I'm sure they'd be glad to meet with you and talk to you about it or whatever.
Yeah, most, most insurance companies won't. Once Oklahoma passed, they took, they added on that exclusion. Now you can buy specific policies for specific events. But you would have to go outside of the normal policy. And something else I would alert people on is, someone, if they're gonna get those policies, which if we do have permit process, whatever that is, they need to have the city of Seminole, that's what's called an additional insured. So if something happens and someone says, no, I'm suing, I'm suing the city for this event, you flip that right back around and call it right back in on that policy, 'cause technically you're, you're just as a named insured on that policy is how that would work. So that's something we have to watch for whenever that comes about. But you can't buy them and I'm, I'm not gonna tell you they're not expensive. Of course, with it being new, I haven't even run one to tell you. I am sure that it would depend on the number of people that were at the events and if there were people there actually selling or something like that, I don't know. But I've never run one, so I can't tell you that. I can tell you for a wedding, it's really cheap, but I don't know about a marijuana event, I don't know. So, but you can't buy them. There are companies that will do that, they have to.
Yeah.
So I just wanted one, one other comment on that. Um, I pulled the lease agreement to make sure, just to verify that you had the accurate information. They are required to provide the, the insurance and they are, they are vested with the authority for those events, you know, to, to promote those events. And they're, you know, they, they do several, several tournaments a year, I mean, probably more than we, we can count. But, uh, you know, they are ultimately responsible for that.
And they also have to abide by the current ordinances that are in place. So if there's a no smoking ordinance in place, that's where they get caught, right? Is that what I'm, is that true?
Yeah, and, and that brings up a good point, uh, you know, 'cause we hear the, the other side, well, smoking's not supposed to be, you know, done on public places, it's done all the time. You know, is it enforced? No, not most places. I mean, we've got state law says you can't do it, you know, so it, it kinda just depends on where you're at, who's there and who complains and, and that type of thing. So, I, I, I mean, we can't, you know, there's no excuses for that, it's just, that's just the way it is. We need to come up with a policy and we need to, um, in, in my opinion, and, and we either re, need to renew or revise or reaffirm our policy for the record so that there's no confusion with regard to probably alcohol and, uh, anything like this. And that would be my recommendation. I, I think that they, that we could do fairly easily, uh, as far as the alcohol issue. But, uh, I mean, it's, these laws are pretty standard, you know, across the state as far as smoking in public or on public property and, and drinking on public property.
I think it's pretty important that we don't bash him either because he's doing what he was told, quite honestly, the guy at the golf course. I mean, he's just...
Adom by what his agreement was, so I don't know.
Well, even if the golf course management had said they could do it, would that have been legal for them to say they could do it with the way our ordinances are?
To do what?
I mean, for the, yeah, for the mari, I mean, so that's what I'm thinking. They didn't even have the authority to say yes to begin with. So if they had said yes, they, they...
He would've been in violation of his agreement that he signed, right?
No, he would've been violation of the agreement, but he would've been in violation of city ordinance.
Well, he certainly would've been a breach of contract because he wouldn't have insurance to cover the event in case of a loss. So...
I think the catch there was, and I think I heard it said, I never saw the flyer, so if it's wrong, but it was smoke-friendly, I think was what someone had said, it said, I don't know. And, 'cause if they just want a tournament to raise funds, well, obviously they can do that. But I think that was the catch, maybe when they said smoke-friendly, that threw everybody off, you know. I'd say if someone was out there, they don't smoke it. But I think that was probably the big catch. And they're, they could have an event and, you know, they didn't promote that and that would've been, probably wouldn't have raised any red flags.
You'll remind me. I'll look next week and I'll send some information on how much something like that would cost, just so people would know if you decided to go that way. I mean, it's good information for us too, that maybe how they rate that, how that would work, if you were to remind me of that. There's one company that does really well with that stuff. So, I just, it's not in my everyday queue to do, so you're gonna have to remind me. But I've been more than willing to do that, just so someone knows, hey, you're in it for two grand for a night if you wanna do something like this, you know? I mean, just something so people are aware and then, we know we're protected, they know how much it's gonna cost them if they decide to do that. No one's in trouble, everyone's protected and we can all go along. But just remind me on that.
And I'm trying to find some other ordinances where, besides Muskogee's, so that I can see who, who else is doing it. So if you, if you know of any, let me know and we'll try to pull those and I'll, uh, I'll try to s, send those out to you as well. So, we can see, it, it might be a good idea to get a hold of their part, their rules and regulations from their park board on how they're gonna, they're doing it. So, but we're moving forward and there's, there's some progress, so.
Good. Well, thank you for, for doing that. Um, Mayor, can I respond to, can I respond? So I just, I wanna be really clear, um, that I'm not bashing anyone. I, I, what I'm, I'm doing is questioning because I'm new to this and I don't understand the process um, where a private entity makes a decision that we have to answer for. 'Cause the constituents don't know to go to that individual, they know to come to us. And so that's my concern is, where, where does, where's our responsibility come in? Um, do we just, you know, just wholly just kind of give that responsibility to the private entity? I don't think that's, I don't think that's right and I don't think that's true. But it, it seemed that way in this instance, that we weren't consulted at all. So, and then I also, um, I think conversely, your question about it, did they, would they have been, um, within their, I guess their, um, within their contract to agree to that cannabis event? Are they within their contract to agree to do the alcohol event that's coming up? So they're, so the, the policy is saying yes to this, no to this, and what I hear you saying is, we need to look at the policy for both, including cannabis and alcohol to update it.
Thank you. Okay, so if I could speak to what I think the heart of your, your discussion is, uh, does the city have any say? The answer is yes. They need, on any event, they need on public property, any event held on public property, they need to come to the permit board. And there's a, there's a sheet that they fill out and we are able to ascertain, do they need policing? Do they need crowd control? So, in this case, they did that. And we passed a resolution in January that gave the golf course authority to have Boone Day Golf Tournament with liquor sales. Okay, so the council passed the resolution after the permit board had done the review. So, to answer your question is, we do see it. It's not something that a private company gets to just say, yep, you guys go on out there Saturday. That's not the way it works. We get, we should, doesn't always happen, apparently it happened last year, that we didn't know about it. But we should have an, an understanding of what's going to happen on public property.
I agree. That's, that, I think that goes back to mine, is it public property? Because if it is, then we, we're responsible at some level. And if it's through the parks board, then that's fine. I just...
Permit board.
The permit, I'm sorry, the permit board. Alright, well, thank you.
I think a lot of this was out of habit and routine over the years and when this particular incident occurred, it, it really, I mean, it's good, it, it's really good, 'cause now we can improve it. So we'll get it fixed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, with that, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session. Consideration and possible action to enter into executive session under Oklahoma Statute twenty-five, Section three oh seven dot B dot one, discussing the employment hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of a salaried public officer or employee. City manager, Steve Sexton. Do I have a motion?
Yes, so moved.
So moved, right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?